Thank you. Item 22, vote to ratify the contract with StanTech for the feasibility study, preliminary design, and permit of runway 2-20, reconstruction, airspace, and analysis as defined in the scope of services for the Southbridge Municipal Airport to be provided by StanTech Consultant Services Incorporated, Engine Air, for a total project cost of $217,000 with the FAA share of $195,300, state share of $10,850, and the local share of $10,850 with the local share to come from the airport revolving fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Mr. Clements, I know you're...
(inaudible)
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Just if I could, because I wanted to make one comment on this because it was sort of interesting. Many of you that have been on the board remember we did the apron project up at the airport. That basically is where the airplanes park after they come off the runway. And I remember the project team was up there and I think actually the airport chairman, Mr. Clements, was with us, but I happened to walk out to the airport and I'm looking at this beautiful apron. It's all perfectly smooth. It looks gorgeous. And I walk out to the runway and there's cracks in the runway. I'm like, wow, this is kind of strange. We did the apron. It looks beautiful, but the runway needs work. And in my mind, the runway is more important than the apron. So needless to say, I think the airport chairman came over and StanTech came over and the gentleman from the State Department of Transportation. All of a sudden, we kind of hauled up. There was large discussion about the airport runway. At that time, I don't think it was on the state's list of projects to do next. I think it was down the road some. So I was rather surprised when all of a sudden, I think that conversation that was generated right there on the runway itself, and the next thing I knew within a year, all of a sudden, the state was looking at redoing the airport, or the actual runway itself. I think it's critical because, as you know, we have a brand-new airport. We have now a really, really nice apron, and now we're going to do the major part, which is runway. So, you know, there's been a lot of tremendous amount of federal and state money that's went into this airport, and it's looking really, really nice. I think this is kind of, in my mind, one of the big finishing touches to improve that. With that, Mr. Chairman, I think Counselor Clements. The airport chairman, Mr. Clements, would love to comment on this particular issue.
Now on the council, Mr. Clements.
It's a steal.
Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's speak. I could catch a little bit what the town manager spoke about, but mostly, you know, the airport has a five-year master plan and the next portion, you know, as you know, we just finished a fuel farm. The next capital improvement project that the airport has is reconstruction of the runway. And really, it's dictated by the FAA. You know, we had some other things. We'd love to put up hangars and things like that, but they said, no, your runway is below critical ratings. You need to replace that first. So the airport commission worked with Mass DOT and the FAA to put this scope of services together. So it is the preliminary design for the reconstruction of the runway, but as you can see, it has a wildlife hazard site visit and some other airspace calculations that have to be done as well. And these are all required by the FAA before they'll give funding for that. So this is the first phase of getting the engineering done, and then the next second phase would be the actual reconstruction of the runway.
Okay. I did get a message that you had a presentation. Did you have anything that you needed to present?
No, I didn't have anything. I had a little picture I could put up, but I couldn't get it out up.
Okay. Questions?
But I want, you'd have to say that someone asked in the meetings, the dates on this started in, I think, 6:30 was the date. But the project, once it's signed, it'll be about four months long to complete.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Clements? Mr. Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. I am supporting that. I'd like to see the airport in good standing and continue receiving airplane in and out. So I'd like to see, you know, my opinion, that one get approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I think I fully support this. I think, well, I know that if you've traveled to Commonwealth, I go to a lot of cities and towns, and we have by far one of the nicest municipal airports, well-kept, professionally run. So it's credit to everybody up there at the airport. So thank you, Mr. Clements. Fully support this and all the future improvements. I think that fuel farm, I had an opportunity to check that fuel farm. I think that's a great first step, and I know there may be plans on expanding even the new fuel farm down the road. So I think it's all well and good. So thank you. Any further discussion?
Thanks for hanging in as long as you did. So with that, roll call.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Unanimous for all presidents. Thank you, Mr. Clements. Look forward to this day. Thank you. Item 23, vote to ratify the lease agreements between the Town of Southbridge and Southbridge Equities LLC of 277 Broadway Street, Suite 801, New York, New York, entitled Plan of Waste Receptacle Lease Area to Provide Permanent Dumpster Enclosure Space on a Portion of Town-Own Land as Part of the Central Street Parking Lot Project. Pending receipt of Certificate of Insurance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, we discussed the next three items here at GenGov and the last one. And there was a little bit of debate over it because I think we ended up voting all...
Can you put the mic in front of you?
I can't remember. And I just, so you know, I did, if you saw your email, I sent around, we had requested the insurance certificates, and I sent them around to everybody this afternoon. So we did get them. We were waiting for those. And so basically, everything here, these things are all ready to go. There's no cost to the town. It's just a small space so that they can put a dumpster in and have it be sealed off in a way that it doesn't look like a dumpster, basically.
Mr. Town Manager, did you have anything?
Counselor Steves, I think, is correct. We want that, let's be straight up and honest. We spent a lot of money on that Central Street parking area, and we want the dumpsters not to take away from the beautification we made of that project. So I think this is important. I think we, you know, the town, through a variety of parties, will enforce the cleanliness of that. As you look at the lease agreement, it allows the town to take back that lease and stop it any time if they don't keep up with the cleanliness. So I'm very comfortable that these companies that are involved are going to take care of it for their own, frankly, they need to for their own reasons, but the town has the power and authority to be able to make sure they do. So I'm very comfortable with these particular leases. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. I know at the meeting, we discussed what would be the repercussions if, say, they damaged the enclosure. So is there any update for that? Because I know we were kind of left, kind of confused about whether it would fall on us or it would fall on them if they damaged it.
You're talking about the actual closure around the dumpster, right?
The actual closure that we're paying you to.
So, you know, this is a little bit hard, Counselor Ryan, to answer because the town does have insurance for property damage type thing, and it's hard to envision what it might be. I wouldn't be surprised to see a fence get dented or those kind of things that are smaller than a deductible. I would like to believe, based upon my conversations with the property owners over there, that the town and them would work together if there's any significant damage to those structures and figure out a way to do it. I think it's in everybody's best interest to make sure that that site looks nice after we've got it up to where we've got it. Yeah, obviously, those businesses are looking to attract customers, so I think they are going to be partners with us. Not going to say who will fix minor damage. I would be willing to bet Mr. Clements, who's behind me, if he's still behind me, oh, I don't know if he's still behind me, but he's one of the property owners over there, he's going to work to make sure, because of his own business, that that's nicely kept. So, and again, we have teeth in it. If people do things that are stupid, we can, we have teeth in it. We can kick them literally out of that process. Now, I'll say this to you. Those dumpsters are critical to those businesses. They have to have them. They need it for their businesses, and their tenants can't survive without them. So they have a real reason to be protective in that situation.
If I may follow up, and maybe Heather knows about the other applicants, not the other applicants, but the other people around that area that have dumpsters that weren't considered as part of the process, if there's any update on that?
There is movement on that in the fact that we had a meeting on-site, and we talked about what the size of the dumpsters that they were going to need, and they were going to provide information. I know that information has been provided to Andy, and Andy was going to assist in making some calculation about what the proper-sized dumpsters would be. And so then, we are going to get back together and make sure that my office already had proposed a couple options for different layouts, and that might, I'll be quite frank, is probably going to result in losing additional parking spaces down there. But if we want to do something to accommodate those businesses and not have them going over our plaza area, which is my goal for many reasons, I think we need to consider that. We need to do it in a way that minimizes the parking spaces, and we'll work with the potential applicants to address that. I will tell you that we had already proposed something to one of the locations down there that has a chronic trash problem, and they didn't want to speak to us. So I don't know how that's going to proceed in the future, but we will keep working through that.
Is that the same one that we had the issue with of them just putting a dumpster on our property without our permission?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll, if I could, Mr....
Go ahead, Mr. Town.
And I don't want to get into the specific name of the person in the issue, but fines have been implemented as a result, because quite frankly, I'm tired of, and I'll say it in a general sort of way, I'm tired of any person that ignores our regulations and our processes. It made it clear to our health inspector that if people don't follow those regulations, don't follow those processes, and we have the ability to find it, we will do so because we've invested a lot to make it look nice. So the fines have occurred, and we're moving forward in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Thank you, Heather.
Any further discussion? Counselor Marquetti?
Well, the town manager said we invested a lot down there. We did, we did invest a lot down there at the Central Street Parking Lot and the Hamilton Street area alleyway. A business owner approached you and asked for you to provide a spot for his dumpster. And the fact that we don't charge anybody for this, it's just, I can't support things like that. It's, if they want a dumpster area, that's fine, but I think that they should help the town pay for the work that the taxpayers have paid to fix up that area down there. So I won't support them unless you start charging people for putting their dumpsters in a nice, beautiful dumpster alleyway. Thank you.
Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think any business in town, we should support, and it's not their fault if they don't have a place in that building, the downtown, to be able to put dumpsters or get rid of their trash. So I think we should be able to help those businesses to stay in town and work with them, and they's willing to provide their dumpster. We just need to give them the spot, and they will maintain it. It's no cleaning. We can cancel the lease anytime. They don't commit what we have on the contra. And I don't think we should not support this because we're going to lose businesses, and we need businesses. We need more businesses, and I'm not gonna, you know, I respect your opinion, agree with your regard, and because the dumpster, we're not going to support that because nobody else is going to come if they have the same issue. And if you want the main street to be built, there's no place to put dumpster for those businesses. So I think we should support it. Counsel Marquetti, thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Counselor, Mr. Town Manager?
And Counselor Marquetti, I appreciate your issues because there's a lot of logic to it. I do agree that we need to provide whatever help we can to businesses. You've got to remember that back when those buildings were created, there wasn't a lot of land use regulations that there are today. So they could throw dumpsters anywhere they want, and, you know, the requirements in today's world are completely different. And when you have buildings that don't meet today's zoning codes and things, and their grandfather, you have to work with them because, like I said, we're using, if they had plenty of land there, we wouldn't have to use town land or town parking lots to do this. So, you know, that's the whole purpose of the new zoning regs, that if you do something new, we try to plan for the future of these kind of things. But in the old days, there was none of this stuff. Everybody just did what they wanted to do, and now we're kind of dealing with those issues. You know, even with, you know, we talked about a lot on these dumpsters, because I've been over there numerous times, about fire code and how close they can be to the buildings and all this. It's hard to put a dumpster when there isn't any land away from the building to put it on. So I appreciate your frustration on this. I think we're trying to, as a town, do the best we can in a difficult situation, and at the same time, the reason why the federal government, the state government, the town government tries to work with businesses is because it's an investment in the future of the community in terms of economic development. Like, I'm hoping that every store over there gets full, and that, you know, they're generating taxes, and we have services. But there's no perfect answer, I guess is what I'm trying to say to you. We're doing the best we can with the situation that we're given, and I understand the frustration. So I want you to know, you know, we hear you, but we're working the best we can to come up with conclusions that work for everybody.
Any further discussions? Roll call.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
And Counselor Jovan?
Yes. Item 24, vote to ratify the lease agreements between the Town of Southbridge Investment Guru LLC of 14 Hamilton Street, Southbridge, Mass., 13 Aspen Avenue, South Grafton, Mass., entitled Plan of Waste Receptacle Lease Area to Provide Permanent Dumpster Enclosure Space on the Portion of Town-Own Land as Part of the Central Street Parking Lot Project. Pending receipt of Certificate of Insurance.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
And Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Motion carries. Item 25, vote to ratify the lease agreements between the Town of Southbridge and Yun Ching Chen Dynasty Restaurant, entitled Plan of Waste Receptacle Lease Area to Provide Permanent Dumpster Enclosure Space on Town-Own Land as Part of the Central Street Parking Lot Project. Pending receipt of Certificate of Insurance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
And Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 26, vote to appoint Finance Director Karen Hinois as the interim Town Manager effective August 21, 2020 until September 8, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. The reason for this being on, it was on the advice of Council D. Moskis, that we had to take an official vote to appoint her, even though the charter specifies in the absence of the Town Manager, but given the fact that the contract ended, there is real no absence. So as a technicality, you should appoint him or her as the acting Town Manager. So that is the reason that this is on the agenda. Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, I had a quick question. I remember several years ago, when she ended up acting as Town Manager for like six months, we ended up having, we ended up giving her a little extra money to do it. I don't think it might not be necessary for this particular period. It's only two weeks, but is there any plan, is there any plan for that if we need to?
I certainly think that the council should entertain some kind of recognition of the work above and beyond just the normal one week, two weeks, because technically, so I think we'll bring that up at another meeting and have some kind of discussion of what that could look like. But I think it would be fair to do that, but we'll take that up at another meeting.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Item 27, vote to amend Section 6-200, Keeping of Pets Bylaw, according to changes made and recommended. First reading, March 9, 2020. Second reading, July 6, 2020. Third and final reading, tonight, 8:10, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Counselor Steves, you just went through your general government?
Yes, I did. And we, first of all, the chief and Caitlin were both there. They made some extensive comments. We talked about it a little bit. I know that they're both kind of frustrated that it's been beaten to death repeatedly by now. And we had originally, we did unanimously approve it, and we also unanimously approved that we make this the last reading as opposed to restarting the process again despite the two paragraphs of changes. And we also, we also had come to consensus, we didn't specifically vote on it, but we came to consensus that we should have, that we should actually read it in its entirety. So it's not something I really am excited about doing, but I will be more willing to start it.
Okay, hold on. Counselor Ryan?
Just a correction. I voted no.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry.
I did vote no.
On, what, you voted no on what?
On the sending this up with recommendation from subcommittee.
Okay. Yes, as Counselor Steves said, we have really beaten this to death. And I like to thank the chief and Caitlin for their patience with the council on this matter. And then thank you for being here this evening. Given the limitations of our remote access, I felt it was important that if anybody had any final questions before this bylaw was read and adopted, that they be here for that. So I guess the agenda item was to actually read this item. So, you know, we've had a legal opinion. I know a former counselor had brought up the concerns about the reading of bylaws we had sent out just for the new counselors. A request through our legal counsel about what does the requirement of a reading mean, given the new technology that we have. So this should be something that perhaps charter review should take a look at as far as the technical terms, as far as the reading. Goes back to the old common law language of the reading, you know, and our recommendation was that, or the recommendation of council was, as long as we made sure the public was fully aware of the fact that we had bylaw amendments going on, that we made them available to the public, that there was ample opportunity to respond and give input, that we could waive the reading. But I guess, given the formal vote, and then that we could entertain a motion to waive, but if one counselor decided that... So it's actually the, their recommendation at that time, and this is an October 15, 2018 advisory, that they proposed the bylaw amendment does not have to be read in its entirety if there's no objection by a town counselor. If there was one council that objected, then it had to be read in its entirety. Otherwise, their recommendation was that a copy of the complete bylaw amendment be provided to each member of the town council, be available to the media and to any citizen requesting the same, which I would attest to the fact that every town council has had probably, within the last two years, 30-plus copies of this bylaw, that the chairman of the town council asked the town council to vote to waive the reading of the entire bylaw amendment, subject to an objection by any member, that the proposed vote is moved to adopt the town council clerk or another designated member of the town council may read aloud only the title and proposed of the bylaw amendment. So that's where we're at. So I guess the recommendation was, Counselor Marquetti?
Well, I would just recommend that we just read these changes here and waive the rest.
Well, there was substantial changes throughout the whole document.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was...
But we've read the other changes.
We've never read them.
We've never read them.
The entire thing, but we have read the other changes.
No, we haven't.
No, we've never read the whole thing. We waived the readings. So I will attest to...
Well, has somebody objected to us waiving the reading?
What's happened?
Actually, Denise did too, originally. That's why we brought it up.
So I don't want to get into, it's going to take a longer discussion about the whole waiving of readings. I think the purpose of reading is, we'll leave that for another discussion. So, I mean, I know school committees waive readings all the time, and that's what we tried to do. I agree. So with that, Counselor Steves, with no objection, I cannot hear a word you say.
Okay.
So Counselor Daniel, if you would read, please, so that it's no reflection...
Can you hear me now?
I know. It's, I really can't hear you at all. So Counselor Daniel, if you want to start, did you have something?
Just one thing before. I just wanted to point out, just like in the general government packets, the bylaw we got was messed up again. It was...
Oh, you're right.
It skips from two, six point, same thing as the general government.
Oh, you're right. It is. Thank you.
We got missing pages.
You are correct.
So I just wanted to point that out again. For some reason, again, we got missing pages in this document. I've read them as it's proposed, but I just wanted to point that out that...
Well, I guess we can't read it then.
I guess we can't. You're right.
I am not proposing this again because the chief and animal control officer have been here for three hours to do this.
Do you have a full text? Okay. Yeah, I don't know why we keep getting half copies, but...
Counselor Daniel, if you may.
Here we go. Section 6-200, Keeping of Pets. Section 6-201, Licensing of Dogs. Section 6-201.1, Licenses and Fees. The owner or keeper of a dog over the age of six months shall obtain a license for the dog. The registering, numbering, describing, and licensing of a dog shall be conducted by the licensing authority. The licensing authority shall not grant a license for a dog unless the owner of the dog provides the licensing authority with a veterinarian's certification that the dog has been vaccinated in accordance with Mass. General Act, Chapter 140, Section 145B. Certification that such a dog is exempt from the vaccination requirement under said Mass. General Act, Chapter 140, Section 145B, or an authorized letter from a veterinarian that either of these certifications was issued relative to such dog. The license shall be granted upon condition that the dog shall be controlled and restrained from killing, chasing, or harassing livestock or fowl. The owner of a dog may add descriptive words, not over ten in number, upon the license form to indicate the color, breed, weight, or special markings of the licensed dog. The owner or keeper of a licensed dog shall keep affixed around the dog's neck or body a collar or harness of leather or other suitable material to which a tag shall be securely attached. The tags shall have inscribed upon it the dog's license number, the name of the city or town issuing the license, and the year of issue. If the tag becomes lost, the owner or keeper of the dog shall immediately secure a substitute tag from the town clerk at a cost of $2. This section shall not apply to a person to whom a valid kennel license has been issued. No license fee shall be charged for a dog certified to serve a blind or deaf person, provided the dog is actually in the service of a blind or deaf person. Any person 70 years of age, upon proof of age, shall be exempt from the annual fee for one dog per household per year. The owner of a kennel license aged 70 years of age or older shall be excluded from this exemption. New residents bringing dogs six months old or older into the Town of Southbridge shall purchase a license from the town clerk within 60 days. No license fee or any part thereof shall be refunded because of subsequent death, loss, spaying, or removal from the Town of Southridge. Licensing period shall begin January 1 through March 31 of each year. All dog licenses expire March 31 of the next calendar year. The grace period after March 31 shall start on April 1 until April 30 of that year with a penalty of $10. Dog owners who renew their dog tags after March 31 or after 30 days from the date of rabies vaccination, or after 30 days from the date of maturing to the age of six months, shall pay a penalty of $10. All dog owners that license their pets after the passage of this bylaw shall apply for a one-year dog license. Violation of this bylaw shall be enforceable through noncriminal disposition by any police officer of the Town of Southbridge or any animal control officer pursuant to General Act, Chapter 40, Section 21D, and Section 1-111 of the bylaws, and for such purposes, the following penalties shall be assessed of $50 per dog. Dog license fee shall be as follows. Male or female, $20. Neutered male or spayed female, $10. Kennel license, four dogs or less, $25. Kennel license, 10 dogs or less, $50. Substitute tag, $2. Transfer license, $4. Late fee after March 31, single license, $10. Late fee after March 31, kennel license, $50. 6-201.2, Kennel License. Any owner/keeper shall apply for a kennel license when the owner/keeper is in possession of five or more dogs. Any owner/keeper can apply for a kennel license when there is less than four dogs in lieu of applying for an individual dog license. No more than 10 dogs are allowed on kennel license in the Town of Southridge. Kennel licenses shall be, shall only be issued to a single-family residence or the owner of the property where the dogs will be housed. A kennel licensee shall cause each dog kept in this kennel to wear, while is it at large, a collar or harness of leather or other suitable material to which a license shall be securely attached. Tags shall be furnished to the owner or keeper by the licensing authority in quantities not less than the number of dogs kept in the kennel. Licensing period for a kennel license shall begin January 1 through March 31 of each year. All kennel licenses expire March 31 of the next calendar year. To determine the amount of the license fee for a kennel, a dog under the age of six months shall not be counted in the number of dogs kept in the kennel. The name and address of the owner of each dog kept in a kennel, if other than the person maintaining the kennel, shall be kept at the kennel and available for inspection by an animal control officer or police officer. There shall be no kennel fee charged to a domestic charitable corporation incorporated exclusively for the purpose of protecting animals from cruelty, neglect, or abuse, or for the relief of suffering. Penalties for kennel license violations. Any person required to obtain a kennel license, or any person eligible and electing to do so in lieu of a dog license or licenses, who fails to obtain one before March 31, shall pay a late fee of $50. Any person maintaining a kennel or licenses who fails to obtain one before March 31, shall pay a late fee Any person maintaining a kennel after the license to maintain a kennel has been revoked, or while such license is suspended, shall be assessed a fine of $500 for the first offense, and a fine of not more than $1,000 for a second or subsequent offense. Violation of this bylaw shall be enforceable through noncriminal disposition by any police officer of the town of Southridge, or any animal control officer pursuant to General Law's Chapter 40, Section 21D, and Section 1-111 of the bylaws. Six dash two zero one point three, definition of terms. As used in this bylaw, unless the context otherwise indicates. A, dangerous dog. A dog that either, one, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. B, dog, shall mean any animal of canine species, both male and female. C, kennel. A pack or collection of dogs on a single premise, including a commercial boarding or training kennel, commercial breeding kennel, domestic charitable corporation kennel, personal kennel, or veterinary kennel. Commercial boarding or training kennel is an establishment used for boarding, holding, daycare, overnight stays, or training of animals that are not the property of the owner of the establishment at which such services are rendered in exchange for consideration and in the absence of the owner of any such animal. Provided, however, that commercial boarding or training kennel shall not include an animal shelter or animal control facility, a pet shop licensed under Section 39A of Chapter 129, a grooming facility operated solely for the purpose of grooming, and not for overnight boarding, or an individual who temporarily, and not in the normal course of business, boards or cares for animals owned by others. Commercial breed or kennel is an establishment, other than a personal kennel, engaged in the business of breeding animals for sale or exchange to wholesalers, brokers, or pet shops in return for consideration. Domestic charitable corporation kennel is a facility operated, owned, or maintained by a domestic charitable corporation registered with the department, or an animal welfare society, or other nonprofit organization incorporated for the purpose of providing for and promoting the welfare, protection, and humane treatment of animals, including a veterinary hospital or clinic operated by a licensed veterinarian, which operates consistent with such purposes while providing veterinary treatment and care. Personal kennel. A pack or collection of more than four dogs, three months old or older, owned or kept under single ownership for private personal use, provided, however, that breeding of personally-owned dogs may take place for the purpose of improving, exhibiting, or showing the breed, or for use in legal sporting activity, or for other personal reasons, provided further that selling, trading, bottling, or distributing such breeding from a personal kennel shall be to other breeders or individuals by private sale only, and not to wholesalers, brokers, or pet shops, provided further that a personal kennel shall not sell, trade, barter, or distribute a dog not bred from its personally-owned dog, and provided further that dogs temporarily housed at a personal kennel in conjunction with an animal shelter or rescue registered with the department may be sold, traded, bartered, or distributed if the transfer is not for profit. Veterinary kennel. A veterinary kennel or clinic that boards dogs for reasons in addition to medical treatment or care, provided, however, that veterinary kennel shall not include a hospital or clinic used solely to house dogs that have undergone veterinary treatments or observation, or will do so only for the period of time necessary to accomplish that veterinary care. D, nuisance dog. A dog that, one, by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity, or two, by excessive barking, causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or three, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person, but such threat or attack was not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. E, owner or keeper, shall mean any person or persons, firm, association, or corporation owning, keeping, or harboring a dog as herein defined. F, public nuisance, shall mean any dog which by biting, excessive barking, howling, running at large, or in any other manner disturbs the quiet of the public. G, restraint, shall mean the dog will be on a leash or substantial chain and under the control of a person competent to control or restrain it so that it shall not be a threat to public safety. The mere muscling of a dog shall not prevent it from being a public nuisance. H, run at large, shall mean any dog free of restraint, which is permitted to wander on private property of others or public ways at will. Six dash two zero one point four, prohibitions. No owner or keeper shall permit any dog, whether licensed or unlicensed, to become a public nuisance, or to run at large within the town of Southridge anytime, day or night. Six dash two zero one point five, penalty. Violations of this bylaw shall be enforceable by any police officer of the town of Southridge or any animal control officer through noncriminal disposition pursuant to General Law's Chapter 40, Section 21D, and Section 1-111 of the bylaws, and for such purposes, schedule of penalties shall be applicable. First offense, written warning, or issued a fine of not more than $25. Second offense, $50. Third offense, $75. Fourth offense, $100. Six dash two zero one point six, notice to owner and redemption. If an animal is impounded, the animal control officer shall notify the owner, if known, within twenty-four hours. The owner may then reclaim the animal by reimbursing the town of Southridge for expenses, fines, and fees for maintaining the impounded animal. In any event, the maintenance cost shall not exceed $20 for each twenty-four-hour period or any part thereof, plus $15 as an initial handling fee. However, as required by state law, all dogs and cats six months of age or older must be current on rabies, and dogs licensed before the animal control officer may release it. Six dash two zero one point seven, disposition of unclaimed dogs. Any animal which has been impounded and not redeemed by the owner within seven days shall be disposed of as provided by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Section 151A, and any amendments thereto. All adoptable pets shall be signed over to a shelter or rescue organization approved by the state of Massachusetts. Section six dash two zero one point eight, collection of fines and fees. All fines and fees collected by the animal control officer while enforcing the provisions of this bylaw shall be collected in the form of personal check, money order, or registered check, and made payable to the town of Southridge. In no event shall the animal control officer accept cash. Six dash two zero one point nine, disposition of funds. Any fines or fees collected by the animal control officer shall be accounted for and paid over to the town clerk at such time and in such manner as may be designated by the town treasurer. Six dash two zero one point one zero, exceptions to orders. A dog shall not be deemed a public nuisance or run at large when, A, such dog is attached to a restraining device and under the care and control of a person competent to restrain such dog so that it shall not be a threat to public safety, and the mere muscling of such dog shall not satisfy the requirements of this order. B, such dog is being used as a so-called hunting dog and is being supervised by a person competent to restrain such dog so that it shall not be a threat to public safety. Six dash two zero one point one one, nuisance and dangerous dog hearings. Any person may make a written complaint to the town council chairman of the town of Southridge that any dog owned or kept within the town of Southridge is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog, as those terms are defined in Mass. General Law's Chapter 140, Section 157. The town council chairman shall investigate or cause to be investigated such complaint, including an examination under oath of the complainant at a public hearing in the municipality to determine whether the dog is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog, and shall make such order concerning the restraint or disposal of such dog as provided in Mass. General Law's Chapter 140, Section 157. When a dangerous dog hearing is requested by any police officer of the town of Southridge, or any animal control officer, the dog in question shall be subject to empowerment in a local shelter at the owner's or guardian's expense pending compliance with this section, or loss of ownership of the dog for the public safety reasoning. Penalty. Violations of such orders shall be subject to the enforcement provisions by any police officer of the town of Southridge, or any animal control officer under Mass. General Law's Chapter 140, Sections 157 and 157A, which, upon conviction, may include, for a first offense, a fine of not more than $500 through noncriminal disposition pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40, Section 21D, and Section 1-111, imprisonment for not more than sixty days in a jail or house of correction, or both, and for a second or subsequent offense by a fine through noncriminal disposition pursuant to General Law's Chapter 40, Section 21D, and Section 1-111, of not more than $1,000, imprisonment for no more than ninety days in a jail or house of correction. Six dash two zero two, prevention of the spread of rabies.
Councilor Daniel, you want a break? I'll pass it on to Council Adams if you want. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where are you at? So, I don't have this portion. Where are you at? So, I don't, because I don't have this portion.
At the top.
Very top?
Yeah.
Animal inspector. Inspector of animals appointed by the state of Massachusetts, nominated by the town of Southridge, currently vaccinated. A domestic animal which has received a properly administered rabies vaccine licensed by the United States Department of Agriculture for the use in that species and within a timeframe consistent with the labeled duration of the product. Department, the Department of Agricultural Resources. Euthanasia. Induction of death, induction of death in an animal in a manner that is rapid, painless, and stress-free as possible, and is consistent with the current American Veterinary Medical Association guidelines for the euthanasia of animals in accordance with Mass. General Law. Exposed. Exposed by direct contact, exposed by proximity, or received a wound of unknown origin. Exposed by direct contact, physical contact with, received a bite or a scratch from, or ate any part of a confirmed or suspected rabid animal. Exposed by proximity. Seen near or in the vicinity of a confirmed rabid animal, but which had no physical contact with nor with nor received any wounds from the confirmed rabid animal. Isolation. Restricting a domestic animal from any direct human or other animal contact. Animal must be confined to a facility such as a dog pound, veterinary hospital, commercial kennel, or quarantine facility for livestock approved by the animal inspector of the town of Southridge, or isolation at home under conditions approved by the animal inspector of the town of Southridge and the department. Not currently vaccinated, any previously vaccinated animal which has not been revaccinated prior to the expiration of its most recent vaccinations. Quarantine. Confinement of a domestic animal from humans and other animals for the purpose of observing the animal for signs of rabies and minimizing chances of animal spreading rabies to human or other animals. This includes isolation and strict confinement. Rabies. A disease of mammals, virtually always fatal, caused by the rabies virus, and characterized by progressive deterioration of the central nervous system. Signs of rabies. Unexplained aggression, impaired locomotion, varying degrees of paralysis, extreme depression, or viciousness. The signs of rabies vary in animals. Some will display attack-like behavior, while others appear sick or dazed. Strict confinement. Animal may be kept at home in an escape-proof, solid-walled building with a roof, approved by the animal inspector of the town of Southridge. Animal may be leased, walked by an adult, or under the direct supervision of an adult. Owner will be informed of the potential rabies risk and given instructions in writing. Owner is required to notify veterinarian and animal inspector of unusual behavior or change in health status of pet. Ten-day quarantine. Strict confinement of an apparently healthy domestic animal that has bitten or scratched a human or other domestic animal. Unvaccinated. Any domestic animal which has never received a licensed United States Department of Agricultural Rabies vaccine label for use in that species. Any animal which is within twenty-eight days of having received its first rabies vaccine, or any animal of a species for which there is no licensed USDA rabies vaccine. Wound of unknown origin, a puncture wound, cut or scratch, which has broken the skin and was obtained from an unknown source, but is presumed to be from another animal. Six TAC two zero two point two, vaccination against rabies. Certificate, tag, proof of vaccinations, exemptions, and penalty. Whoever is the owner of or keeper of a dog, cat, or ferret in the town of Southridge that is six months of age or older shall have it vaccinated against rabies by a licensed veterinarian and revaccinated in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 145, Bravo. Unvaccinated dogs, cats, or ferrets acquired or moved into the town of Southridge shall be vaccinated within thirty days, or upon reaching the animal's six months, age of six months, whichever occurs first. The veterinarian shall issue a tag with each certificate of vaccination. The tag shall be secured by the owner or keeper of the dog, cat, or ferret, to a collar or harness made of suitable material to be worn by the dog, cat, or ferret, provided, however, that the owner of the cat or ferret may choose not to affix the tag, but shall have the tag available for inspection by authorized persons. In the event that a tag is lost, the owner or keeper of the animal shall, upon presentation of the original vaccination certificate, be issued a new tag. A licensing authority may grant an exemption from this section for a dog, cat, or ferret that, A, the local board of health has declared exempt from the rabies vaccination requirement upon presentation of the veterinarian's certificate stating that because of an infirmity, I hope I'm saying that right, other physical conditions or therapy, such inoculation is considered inadvisable for a specified period of time for such reasons, B, is in transit, or C, was brought into the town of Southridge temporarily for the sole purpose of display in a show or for exhibition. No rabies vaccine is licensed for use in wild animals or wild animals crossbred to domestic animals, including wolf, dog hybrids, and wild domestic cat hybrids. They may be vaccinated with a killed virus vaccine by a licensed veterinarian that may or may not provide protection. If the animal bites or scratches a person or a domestic animal, the wild animal or hybrid will be considered unvaccinated. Penalty. Violations of this bylaw shall be enforceable through noncriminal disposition by any police officer of the town of Southridge, or any animal control officer pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40, subsection 21D, and Section 1, TAC 111 of the bylaws, and for such purposes, the following penalties shall be applicable. First offense, $50. Second and subsequent offenses, $100. Collection of fines and fees. All fines and fees collected by the animal inspector slash animal control officer shall be accounted for and paid over to the town clerk at such time and in such a manner as may be designated by the town treasurer. Six TAC two zero two point three, rabies quarantine. Requirements for any domestic animal which bites a human or another domestic animal. One, if the animal inspector, after completing an investigation, determines that the domestic animal has bitten or scratched a human or another domestic animal, they shall issue a written order to the person in the custody... a written order to the person in the custody of the biting animal requiring the animal to be placed under 10-day quarantine. The 10-day quarantine applies regardless of the vaccination status of the biting animal. 2) if the animal displays symptoms compatible with rabies during the 10-day period, the animal shall be euthanized immediately, and the animal inspector and department shall be notified. Samples from any animal which dies or is euthanized during the 10-day quarantine shall be submitted for rabies testing. Testing: requirements for any domestic animals which are exposed. The animal inspector upon completion of an investigation and upon determination that domestic animal has been exposed shall issue a written order to the person in the in custody of the exposed animal requiring the following: 1) exposed domestic animals that are currently vaccinated. The animal inspector shall shall require the immediate administration of a booster vaccination. If the animal's last vaccination was administered over a month prior to the exposure, then the animal shall be placed under strict confinement for 45 days. 2) dogs and cats that are not currently vaccinated but with proof of at least one previous rabies vaccine. The animal inspector shall require the immediate administration of a booster vaccination, and the animal shall be placed under strict confinement for 45 days. 3) exposed domestic animals that are unvaccinated. The animal inspector shall request from the owner of the animal written permission to euthanize the animal. If the owner is unwilling to consent to euthanasia, the animal inspector shall issue a written order to the person in custody of the animal requiring the following: a) any dog or cat exposed by direct contact to a confirmed rabid animal as determined by the state laboratory testing shall be vaccinated immediately and placed into isolation for a period of three months, to be followed by one month of strict confinement. Any ferret exposed by direct contact to a confirmed rabid animal as determined by state laboratory testing shall be vaccinated immediately and placed in i into isolation for a period of three months, to be followed by three months of strict confinement. b) any domestic animal other than a dog, cat, or ferret exposed by direct contact to a confirmed rabid animal as determined by state laboratory testing shall be placed in the strict confinement for six months. c) any dog or cat exposed by direct contact to a suspected rabid animal exposed by proximity to a confirmed rabid animal as determined by state laboratory testing, or which has received a wound of unknown origin, shall be vaccinated immediately and placed under strict confinement for a period of four months. d) any domestic animal other than dogs or cats exposed by direct contact to a suspected rabid animal exposed by proximity to a confirmed rabid animal as determined by the state laboratory testing, or which has received a wound of unknown origin, shall be placed under strict confinement for a period of six months. e) any animal considered unvaccinated because the first vaccination had been administered within the 28-day 28 days prior to the exposure do not require re-vaccination. 4) the person in custody of the animal under quarantine is required to immediately notify the department, a veterinarian, the animal inspector, and the Department of Public Health of any changes in behavior or health status of the animal, or if the animal is euthanized or dies for any reason during the quarantine period. 5) any veterinarian who euthanizes a domestic animal for any reason while the animal is under quarantine must immediately notify the animal inspector of the appropriate municipality. Notification must be made prior to the disposal of the animal. 6) upon determination that an order has been violated, the animal inspector shall recommend that the department issue an order to seize and euthanize the animal and have the animal submitted to the state laboratory for rabies testing. 7) no animal shall be released from quarantine within without written authorization from the department or the animal inspector. 8) the animal inspector shall carry out or cause to be carried out euthanasia orders issued by the department. Any animal or pet owned or harbored with within the town of Southbridge that exposed to a exposed to a confirmed rabid animal shall abide by the Southbridge Rabies Quarantine Guidelines. The animal inspector must approve the places where animals are quarantined. All animals under quarantine must by observed must be should be must be observed by the animal inspector on a regular basis. Enforcement: it shall be the duty of the animal inspector to investigate and enforce the provisions of this bylaw and to give written notice to the Board of Health, Police Chief, and the pet owner in regards to all quarantines. Any veterinarian bills incurred for vaccinating or preparing any pet for rabies testing shall be at the pet owner's expense. Whoever is the owner or keeper of any animal or pet in the town of Southbridge and who has received written notice of quarantine and does not comply with the quarantine order or if the quarantined animal is found outside the approved enclosure of its owner or keeper and not under his/her immediate care shall be reported to the department by the animal inspector for further investigation on the department's behalf. Whoever whoever is the owner or keeper of any animal or pet in the town of Southbridge and who has received written notice of quarantine shall notify the Board of Health in writ in writing prior to removing the animal or pet from Southbridge, giving the name, address, and phone number as to where the animal is going to be housed. 6-TAC 203: Removal of Dog Litter. If any dog shall if any dog shall defecate upon any property or area or hearing after defined, then the owner, keeper, or person then walking or otherwise in charge of said dog shall immediately remove or cause to be removed from said property or area. All feces so deposited by said dog, such owner, keeper, or person must have his immediate possess have in his immediate possession an appropriate device for scooping excrement and any appropriate depository for the transmission of excrement of excrement to a receptacle located upon property owned or owned or possessed by such owner keeping keeper or owner or I'm sorry keeper or person. This provision shall not apply to a person who is visually or physically handicapped. Unless said feces are removed, the owner, keeper, or person then walking or otherwise in charge of said dog, or if said owner, keeper, or person shall be a minor, then the parent or guardian shall each be deemed to have committed a punishable offense. As used in this bylaw, property or area shall mean any public property or the common areas of any privately owned property owned or occupied by any person or persons who are not members of the family of the owner or keeper of or the person then walking or otherwise in charge of the dog. The provision of this bylaw shall not apply to a guide dog, hearing dog, or service dog accompanying any person with with a disability. The commission of any offense punishable under this section shall be punishable by a fine not less than $25 or more than $100. Further, any violation of this bylaw shall be enforceable through the noncriminal disposition pursuant to General Law Chapter 40, Subsection 21D and Section 1, TAC 111 of the bylaws by bylaws by the animal control officer or Board of Health, and for such purposes. Schedule of Penalties: A through C shall be applicable.
Thanks, Counsel. 6-204: Chainer and Tethering Dogs to Stationary Objects, Confinement Restrictions. No person's owner or keeper of a dog shall chain or tether a dog for longer than eight hours in a 24-hour period and outside from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., unless the tethering is for not more than 15 minutes and the dog is not left unattended by the owner, guardian, or keeper. Owner/keeper must abide by all other requirements and prohibitions as to restraint, access to clean water, appropriate shelter, and other matters addressed in Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Section 174E as specified in Section 174E. Penalty: Any violation of this bylaw shall be enforceable through noncriminal disposition pursuant to General Law Chapter 40, Section 21D and Section 1-111 of the bylaws by any police officer of the town of Southbridge or any animal control officer, and for such purposes the following penalties shall be applicable. First offense: written warrant or issued a fine of not more than $50. Second offense: $200. Third offense: $500. And per se, third offense could be subject to empowerment of the dog in a local shelter at the owner's or dog or guardian's expense pending compliance with this section or loss of ownership of the dog. 6-205: Confinement of Animal in Motive Vehicle Causing Exposure to Extreme Heat or Cold. Protection of Animal by Animal Control, Law Enforcement Officer, or Firefighter penalties: a) a person shall not confine an animal in a motive vehicle in a manner that could reasonably be expected to threaten the health of the animal due to the exposure of extreme heat or cold. b) after making reasonable efforts to locate a motive vehicle's owner, an animal control officer is defined in Section 136a, law enforcement officer or firefighter may enter a motive vehicle by any reasonable means to protect the health and safety of an animal. An animal control officer, law enforcement officer, or firefighter may enter the motive vehicle for the sole purpose of assisting the animal and may not search the vehicle or seize items found in the vehicle unless otherwise permitted by law. c) an animal control officer, law enforcement officer, or firefighter who removes or otherwise retrieves an animal under this section shall leave written notice in a secure and conspicuous location on or in the motive vehicle bearing the officer or firefighter's name and title and the address of the location where the animal may be retrieved. The owner may retrieve the animal only after payment of all charges that are accrued for the maintenance, care, medical treatment, and empowerment of the animal. d) an animal control officer, law enforcement officer, or firefighter who removes or otherwise retrieves an animal from a motive vehicle under subsection B in the agency or municipality that employs the officer or firefighter shall be immune from criminal or civil liability that might otherwise result from the removal. e) after making reasonable efforts to locate a motive vehicle's owner, a person other than an animal control officer, law enforcement officer, or firefighter shall not enter a motive vehicle to remove an animal to protect the health and safety of that animal in imminent danger unless the person: a) notifies law enforcement or calls 9/11 before entering vehicle; b) determines the motive vehicle is locked or there is no other reasonable means for exit and uses not more force than reasonably necessary to enter the motive vehicle and remove the animal; c) has good faith and reasonable belief based upon known circumstances that entry into the vehicle is reasonably necessary to prevent imminent danger or harm to the animal; and d) remains with the animal in a safe location in reasonable proximity to the vehicle under law enforcement or other first responder arrives. f) a person who removes an animal from a motive vehicle pursuant to subsection e shall be immune from criminal or civil liability that might otherwise result from the removal. Penalty: Any violation of this bylaw shall be enforceable through noncriminal disposition pursuant to General Law Chapter 40, Section 21D and Section 1-111 of the bylaws by a police officer of the town of Southbridge or any animal control officer for such purposes the following penalties shall be applicable. First offense: written warrant or issued a fine not more than $150. Second offense: $300. Third offense: $500. Nothing in this section shall preclude prosecution under Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Section 77. This is the third and final reading. Any questions, comments to the chief or the animal control officer?
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I've been going through this the last couple, you know.
Can you speak louder, please?
I apologize. I've been going through this last couple weeks, and I've been really struggling. I've listened to the reasons why we're getting the free license. However, for me, I cannot support getting rid of free licenses. It's a service we provide our community, and yeah, we may be the only community that provides it, but it's a unique service we provide to our citizens, and a lot of citizens do utilize it. I also have a problem with the rapid increase in the penalty fee for a late kennel license. I have a problem right now when we're looking at all this financial instability within the economy and within people's lives and homes of increasing fees and penalties while we're all struggling. It's not something I can support, and I will be voting no on this bylaw tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Counsel Dow.
Just one question. If the owners have a fence and somebody like to put the hand in and he get bite, obviously the dog doing his job, where he stand on the bylaw here?
It goes into a more definition like dogs not at fault if taunting and teasing is in place. So, and then there's also a clause if the individual that is entering a secured area, if they're over the age of eight in Massachusetts, the law does see them responsible for doing that, but children under eight, it's a different story. It's been very interesting. There was a case a couple years back with two dogs, a seven-and-a-half-year-old entered in, but if a dog is protecting property and somebody's committing a crime on that property, the dog is exempt.
Okay. Counsel Ryan, regarding the fees, I think we have some people, they don't understand when you give them a ticket $25. They're still doing the same thing, so you have to, I think, I don't know if I'm going to use the right word, hurt him, hurt him a little bit, like 300, 500, to feel it, and then they will learn maybe to control the dog or teach him not to be.
If I may respond, since my name was invoked. The problem I see here is majority, a vast majority of dog owners in this community are lawful, law-abiding dog owners, and with everything going on, I can easily see, especially right now in crisis, them forgetting to go down to the town hall and go down and renew their license with everything going on. I just, with everything that's going on in this world and this economy, I don't feel comfortable raising taxes and fees on residents and eliminating a service in this community that we provide that a lot of residents enjoy. It just doesn't make sense to me, and I've gotten a lot of concerned calls about it. So it's just something I cannot, with any intent and good intent, support tonight.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two dogs myself, and I keep them up to date and under control, and it seems like we use a lot of because the COVID-19 economy-wise, but I think everybody well with the check getting in the mail, not working and sitting home, and I don't see anybody struggling regarding money. They still have responsibility to do. You want an animal, you're welcome, but you still have responsibility to do, and I think the chief and the animal control, they worry of the the COVID to give a break somebody if he doesn't have a license right away to come to the town hall, and a certain time was a reasonable excuse, but I don't think we should keep using because the COVID-19 and the economy, because I see everybody well. As a businessman, and I deal with the public every day, I think everybody have money, more than before. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hold on. Be recognized. It's not a debate like that. Go ahead.
I have to simply disagree with that. I can personally attest that I have been financially hurt during this crisis, so I take personal offense that to that, first of all. Second of all, I think it's a perfectly reasonable reason. Everyone's behind in fees and payments. I myself am behind in fees and payments because I am struggling. So I take personal offense to that. Counsel Dow.
Thank you. Any further comments?
May I respond? Mr. Chair?
In regards to what, the three-year license? We've had debated the three-year license ad nauseam, so unless there's something new.
In regards to the licensing fees?
Yeah.
So through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Ryan, I just want to inform you that the fees for the licensing are the same fees that are in our current bylaw. They're not increasing. What was added was a fee for being late on a kennel license, and the people who apply for a kennel license, they're getting a huge discount by going through that route. If they have four dogs and they are intact and they get a kennel license, if they did individually, that's $20 per dog, and if they get it through a kennel license, they're paying $25. So it's more of an incentive to get them licensed on time than spending the additional $50 for being late. I also give them a chance to rectify the issue by giving a timeframe that they can work with, and I do understand that people have financial struggles at this time, and I ask them, how much time do you need to get your dog license? Majority of the people get it done. Some people do not. In regards to the dog licensing issues, this problem has been pretty outrageous before I even took this position on in 2018. I even took this position on in 2018. This is my chance to try to change something to get better compliance in our town since it's so poor. It's less than 30% of our dogs that are current on their licensing. That was it.
Thank you. I just, there has to be some personal responsibility on the dog owner. You have the ability to get a dog, you feed your dog, the law says you will license your dog, then that personal responsibility, and this is a way to ensure the one year, then I'm all for it. We've had many, many discussions, the one versus the three. I get, I have a dog, it's convenient, hey, I get my rabies, but you know what? You know, I have to make sure we have some personal responsibility to make sure that all dogs are licensed and that's the way to keep track of these dogs, to track them down when they go loose. So I support the one year. Any further discussion? Counsel Steves.
I mean, I questioned through you to either...
Can you speak up? I'm sorry.
A question through you either to Caitlin or the chief. I was curious, for people who have had issues with the fees and fines and those kind of things, is there an opportunity out there that you're aware of that they can go through some sort of a training to about how to be more responsible dog owners?
Not through my knowledge that I know what's available out there. In regards to, like I was saying with the dog licenses, I try to work with the owner to get compliance because it's more successful that way than just issuing citations.
Oh, sure, absolutely. I think it should be done that way.
I would want somebody to work with me and then if I fail to be able to work within that time period, then there is a consequence.
Right. And I totally understand and I have no problem with that. I was just thinking it would be a good idea if, maybe we could come up with something where, if there's one available out there, because I know that there are out there people who really do care about their dogs, but they're just not good dog owners. And that may be some of the issues and some just don't care, unfortunately, but so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Any further discussion? Seen on roll call?
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
No.
And Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience this evening. Thank you for all the hard work. In regards to this process and to Counsel Steves and the general government, all the time spent on this, I know it was, I think we're probably going on a year by the time we started and really... So thank you for your patience and thank you for all the hard work. We appreciate it. Thank you. Item 28. Review and discuss the status of future town council meetings relative to the open meeting law, self-control charter, limitations set forth due to the COVID-19 pandemic and Governor Baker's orders. So I put this on the agenda to have a discussion in public relative to the issues that we have and some of the issues, as we can see tonight, is that we're trying to do this hybrid meeting and it's great if the person's speaking in front of the computer, but nobody can hear the other speakers that if they're participating on the remote location. Now, the issue becomes like some of the guidance that you have is that we are all well and within our right to meet as a body just like we are right now and have the laptop here. People can see what we're doing, cable puts out their program. The caveat to that is that our charter states that a citizen at any town council meeting has the right to be heard. So that's where we become in the rub where that's the charter issue that we had. If we didn't have that within the charter, we could simply say, hey, look, our meetings are public, we have them out there, it's broadcast, we're doing everything as an open and transparent committee, which I believe that we have strived very hard to do in the last several months of this COVID-19. So the question comes and I throw it out to, we don't have to come up with a solution, I think, tonight, but it's something that we have. Now, I had a conversation earlier with Mr. Gardett who was here with the sound system. How do we come about making this work? Now, one of the question was, do we give every council a laptop and, you know, provide laptops for everybody that you have the laptops at your desk, essentially have a remote meeting here? But the issue that happens is there is a lot of delay in that product because I did test it out. So the question comes, how do we want to operate as a body? Because we can see that the numbers are not declining, they're increasing with COVID. There's talk out there that there's the potential that we may go back into phase two. The governor has already said that he's reducing the number of people in a public space. We know the limitations aren't here. While the room here is set for, I believe the, on the board, it says that there's capacity here for seating is 223 people. If you bring that down to, you know, 25% of capacity, okay, that's still a good number of people, but then the other caveat is that the state says you can only have so many people per square foot, so it reduces the capacity of this room. So how do we operate as a body to make sure that we have the ability for people to participate? Which I think they did participate tonight. You had, you know, an individual that came forward, brought a concern about an issue, was able to be heard. The issue is that any feedback that we give as a council is not immediate. That person can watch this on Facebook, or not Facebook, YouTube Live, could watch it on the cable access. So we are given the opportunity for that individual to be heard, but it's the response back that they may not hear. Now, are we, is that our responsibility to make sure that they can hear everybody that's talking? No, our meeting is being broadcast, it's being taped, we have, you know, the ability for people to participate. So the reason I brought certain individuals here to be, you know, VPW directed, there was a number of issues on the agenda. My goal was if we continue to do this hybrid for at least town council meetings, any department head that has an item on the agenda should be here in the council dais to be, at least have the questions that we have. And I think that worked out well tonight by having that individual there. The problem again becomes Chip Norton who's at home, he can't hear any of us. So I throw that out for any comments that anybody might have as we move forward. I know we did, some counselors did their subcommittee meetings all remote, which all remote works very well because everybody can hear everybody and we have the ability to record it, it's broadcast, so that works very well. Everybody has access to it. So I will go around first. Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Also, I don't cite the lack of air circulation in this room right now. It must be close to 100 degrees in here. It's very warm. I think we need, as a body, to make a decision. We're doing subcommittee meetings, remote. I think we need to make a decision if we're going to do council meetings, remote as well with numbers increasing, the uncertainty of this global pandemic. I would favor going back to remote meetings and I think the public participation, if the public wanted to participate, they're certainly welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
As I mentioned in the email to you earlier and when you asked this question, I have, when we had the issues a couple of days ago with the DPW Subcommittee and we started seeing the issues with communication and so forth, I, at that point, I decided it was necessary to, at least for GenGov, to go back to full remote because it didn't make any sense otherwise. I think that the idea of, and the principles of public access say that we kind, given the technological difficulties we have at the moment, I think it basically warrants doing that, even though I would personally rather be here. But I also, I'm kind of getting to like the idea of doing the remote stuff. I wasn't a huge fan back two years ago, whenever it was, when we debated the idea of doing meetings and remote access and all that stuff, but it actually works. And I was kind of surprised to find myself thinking that, but, and I think, like tonight we were able actually to hear the people that were calling through fairly well. It wasn't great, but it worked sort of, but I take it that they couldn't hear us.
Correct.
Okay. So that doesn't work then. I think the idea of, the whole point of having public access is for them to be able to get feedback at the, in real time. They shouldn't have to go back and watch the meeting, you know, on some television or something and say, oh, by the way, what did they say? Because that's the whole, that's the whole point of public access is to get answers. So I think it's, I always say it's very important to go back to remote meetings, even if they are kind of inconvenient.
Counsel Dow?
I think, in my opinion, we should hire a company to look to it, audio, speakers, AC, because as a town council, we should be in town because remote, you can be anywhere overseas, sitting comfortable and just, you know, yes, no, yes, no, you don't know exactly what's going on in the ground in town, so. And it seems like it's going to stay forever. It's not like something, it's going to be a couple of days or a week or months. Sooner or later, we'll have to look to it, to update. I mean, it's, I know it seems funny, but, and needed. I mean, we can use the same ducks to install a unit and give us AC and everybody here, the public, if, you know, whatever come through. And regarding the technology, it's very old and we're almost 122. I mean, we should look to it for ours in the future because every other town, every other places, the main thing is where the government meet or the public meet and I think we're very poor in here and need to be updated, that's my opinion. I mean, we can't run away from the truth. We can keep avoid it and say, no, yes, no, but it's true. There need to be something done in here. Thank you.
I certainly agree with the sentiment about the air conditioning. I mean, we have it set up and have meetings in here because of the live access, especially with the remote participation. I mean, the cable company is able to put everything out in a transparent manner. The technology, I would agree that we need to do something to at least look at the technology itself to upgrade the ability for people that are speaking here to have that. I do understand Counsel Steves' point about remote participation in the past. I would never want to eliminate this public type of body meeting in public. You know, for that limited circumstance, if somebody had an issue that they had to be remote because of an emergency or a business trip at last minute, but you're elected, you should be part here. But I'm talking about this COVID situation that our government, we've done a very good job of making sure that we take care of the town's business for the last six months as a council and as body, as transparent as we possibly can be. And my thought is that we have to continue to, I think we're one of probably the only towns that really do this type of hybrid type of meeting. I think everybody's still staying at the remote access parameters and I think our goal was, we started to see the numbers declining, that we were going to be in a good space to at least move to a phase, that's why we said phase three, but now it's a time to reevaluate what step we're at and what we want to do to make sure that we can operate the best we can for everybody because everybody has their limitations and we'll do that. Counsel Ryan and Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We have rising cases in Massachusetts. We have rising cases in Massachusetts, that's the reality of it. And remote access works. It works. We hear everybody, we have no issues. Tonight, I had a hard time hearing the citizen members talking at the beginning because I could not hear from the computer due to our lack of technological upgrades. The reality is, if we want to run an efficient meeting and we want to make sure public has equal opportunity and equal access to it, remote is the only way to go right now. This hybrid model is just not working. We tried it, great, time to go back to the model we know works.
Right. And I do, the police chief left, but we do have several computers, I think, still down at the police station that if any councilor needed a computer, that from the school department, Chromebook, they graciously allowed us to have some that we may have available, but I think everybody's pretty well set up. Counsel Steves?
I mean, I just wanted to add that I agree completely with what you were saying and I just wanted, that was my thought frame. One of the things I think that we really should be doing is, I think we maybe should be going back to the remote, but also take a look at, take a look at it again in a couple of months and see if the cable, if cable has been able to fix the issues.
No.
I mean, that's, so would we set a timeframe for this? Say maybe, I don't know, Halloween or something? To revisit the idea and say, hey, where do things stand as far as technology goes?
Well, I think, you know, we can at least get that on the ticker for next month to say, hey, some thought process about where we want to go, see where it goes and then continue a month or weekly updates. I'll provide weekly updates of our situation and see where we can go. But if it's the consensus of this body that remote is the preferred method right now, I would move to that because, again, it's just, it's not fair to us as well. We are the elected officials, we volunteer our time, we're doing the best we can, but it's very, very cumbersome to try to make sure everybody's heard. And it's been very difficult tonight. We've done our best, I think we gave it our best shot. We tried to stay within the parameters, but I think it's time that we take a step back, reevaluate and try to come up with another better plan. So if that's the consensus...
I agree.
Counsel Adams?
So just the caveat of everybody else, we tried it, we thought it was a great idea. Didn't really work out as well as we thought it was. New technology is great. I think that's something that needs to be taken a look at, but I'm going to recommend going right back online so everybody can be out there and work it and then those that have a difficult time getting online, we can work with those individuals, residents, counselors, whoever it may be, to work them through. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I understand the sentiment for wanting to go back to remote and I don't, I can't disagree with it. However, I think that the foundation of our town government is based upon an open town meeting and I think that we are the open town meeting. I think we need to make ourselves as visible and as accessible as possible. We say that if we go to remote, people can come in, but as I recall, we had one or two citizens that would come in maybe on any given meeting and I think part of the problem that would need to be looked at would be how we publicize what the invitation numbers are to get people more, more opportunity for more people to come in. And I think while we're doing that and if we're reverting back to remote, I agree with Counsel Dow, I don't want to lose this and I think that we need to, we may need to go into the cable funds and get a consultant to come in and look at our entire communication system and bring us into the 21st century with an aim toward increasing the ability and the availability of citizens to be able to get their input into us. I really, I'm not admonishing the council, but I'm just advising the council a little bit that this is, this is what counts. Seeing us being here, physically being here, seeing each other and giving citizens the opportunity to be here, because even if it's limited to 25 people, it can still be 25 people. We're only 11, 12, 13. We're only 13. You get another 12 people that can still come in and speak to the issues of the day and get their point across. And, you know, I'll go back to the firehouse situation over a year ago and we had a handful, maybe half a dozen citizens that came in. That was all, but that's all it took for them to make their point, to get it across and to make an impact on us as a council. So I would say, we want to go back to the remote, fine, okay, I'm not going to argue that, but we need to move forward in a parallel course by improving what we've got here so that when we get to phase three again and maybe phase three and a half, we're ready and we're able to go and we can do it this time and allow people to get in and make it a better, better show for everyone, lack of a better term.
I agree. Counsel Marketti?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I have to say, the only reason that we were having them in here is because there are some counselors who just cannot do remote. They just don't know how or they're just not technically savvy. I really don't know why, but I will say, when I was sitting where you're sitting, I could hear through that laptop very, very clearly. I could hear everybody, anybody who was on the remote, I could hear them. So why you couldn't have a laptop at each table here and just turn these mics off because it's always... it's always the mics. It's always been the mics since way back when, 10 years ago, was always a problem with the mics. Even without remote, you, you can't hear people with these mics. So having a laptop here, you said something about there was a lag time or something.
Lag time.
Well, that's what you have to solve. Why is there a lag time? And put a laptop here, and then we could talk to each other through the laptops and, and people at home could hear us. I, I don't have any problem going to remote for now. Probably not going to change until we get a vaccine, really, when you think about it. Sometime next year, maybe.
But yeah, I think the goal was, would be, my personal goal would be, let's step, take a step back, go remote, but work on those specific issues to make sure that we can get back here to the dice. I do know when we work at the EOC, there's usually six of us there in the, in the room. We all have our laptops. We all wear earbuds, and we're all able to, to participate with other individuals that are, like the town manager will normally be here in the town hall. Deputy Chief Hewlock will be in the fire station. DPW will be in her office. And it, it works fairly well. But that would be a commitment that we'd have to really make sure that all councils understood that if that's the case, you still would need, every council would still need a laptop.
Yeah.
And have the technical proficiency to operate that way. But that's something we will work on. My goal is, I didn't want to just make a unilateral decision, say we're going all back, because we have upcoming meetings and, and so we could be prepared on how we're going to go through August 31st and do a parallel thing. So Counsel Steve?
I mean, I've got a question. When we were talking about the limitations of people that can come to our meetings, does that include the ability to use that, that area up there? Can anybody go up there? And is that even safe enough to use?
Uh, it's not, I don't believe it's handicapped accessible, so therefore you could not.
Well, then, yeah, I know that it wouldn't be, I mean, handicap people wouldn't be able to go up there, but they can still get down here.
Yeah.
They wouldn't be able to go up there. But that would be kind of like overflow space, I'm thinking.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't know. But then you would have the issue about being able to hear up there. I think we go back to remote and we come back and, and, and come back. So Counsel Dow?
I agree with you. Thank you, Counsel Chair, through you. But I agree with you regarding go back to remote, but we need to work aggressive on.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
On the technology. And, and like, I keep hearing, oh, the AC costs $100,000. But nobody came and actually checked it and, and looked the true, what it is. Because like how I say, the duck there, we use it for heat. You can just change the unit and install the, you know, and then you can use it to use AC and heat. And I've been in town 22 years. I never see more than, I don't want to say much, but 15 to 18 people come to the meeting of the towns and over there.
So, so I'll just leave it at, while that is the case, if there is an issue that we put on the agenda, we have to anticipate that there may be more people. Because you cannot say, if there was a specific issue that we had, you then could not say, well, I block it off at 18, and the 19th person can't come in. That's the issue with the whole open meeting dialogue. So that's, and you can't plan for everything. So I don't know if I'd need a motion to go back. If it is an agenda item, we could entertain a motion to support going back to remote, so that it's official record for the, at least the next 60 days and reevaluate where we're at for 60 days.
I'd make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
All right. So motion to go back to all remote meetings for the next 60 days?
Yes.
Okay. Is that fair? I think that's fair. So there's a motion second. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
With my assertion that we will work with Counsel Daniel and Cable to come up with some visible solutions together with that, okay?
And the AC.
The, to your point, Counsel Dow, I know Mr. Smick had, had contacted me, that when he did the heating system here many years ago, now, his understanding was that they did it with all the ductwork in place, as well as coils. And all they needed to put in was a compressor and condenser or something like that. So I was, I will follow up with him. He, he said when, because he was integral in putting in that system when he worked for a heating company, that the basic, that was the most expensive part, and the condenser was later on. So I know I did mention it to the DPW director, so we'll follow up through DPW on that. Let's see if we can get that going and see where that is.
Thank you.
So they said, he said that it shouldn't be all that costly to be able to do it, that they, that they had specifically done that. Now, how old it is or where it's at, I don't know, but we'll, so we'll start with Counselors' forum. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, I just wanted to follow up if we can have on the next meeting, Karen or Melissa, give us a budget update on how we're doing with the receipts and all that kind of stuff. I know it's not until the end of August, but it'd be nice to have a monthly brief on that. And I just want to say thank you to DPW. I know during the hurricane that day, they were all over the, the town, moving large limbs, trees, best they could. So I just wanted to say thank you to them. And I just want to say, Ron, I wish you nothing but the best in your next endeavor, wherever it lands you, wherever you plan on doing. But I wish you nothing but the best. Thank you. That's all I have.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you. Good luck. You're still welcome in town of Southbridge. We, I think we, we have in the past, good, good working together and a certain thing regarding business and issue. And, and he was very helpful. I want to thank you and good luck. And thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just also want to extend my thanks and gratitude to Manager St. Angelo for all the years you've given here. I've worked with you in many different roles. I remember when I first came to you and met you, I was applying to be on the Board of Health, and you were like, nope, you're too anti landfill. You can't be on the Board of Health. But, you know, it's, it was, I appreciate all the work you've done. I always know, even if I didn't agree with your decision, I always know it came from a good place and a good intention, to want to help and build this community. And I deeply appreciate everything you did. And I wish you nothing but the best in your continuing career. I also want to remind voters, you should have all gotten your mail and applications. If you haven't, also, early voting starts on the 22nd. It's a Saturday, which is awesome. There's so many more opportunities and easy ways to go and make your voice heard in our democracy. There's a lot of contested primaries coming up. So make sure you go out and you make your voice heard and you vote. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Mackay?
Thank you. I did want to bring up, I talked to you this week about the Mill Street Bridge project. And I, and I did get your email explaining that the DPW director's position that it was transferring money for that project was premature. And I appreciate you looking into it for me. But, you know, I just want to point out that it was last November 2019 that we put the money, we put money towards studying the Mill Street Bridge. And it was $5,220 VHB took the project. We, we got their, their contract here. And then it was in March of this year that they came back and they, they gave us their report. They said that there was a short-term idea on how to get the bridge open. There was a long-term idea. So, you know, I don't think it's premature. By the time this comes forward, it'll be almost a year since we first put money towards studying that bridge. They, they came, they took the job, they gave us a report. I think it's time to move on that bridge. There are businesses that want to locate down there. They're going to bring revenue to the town. They're going to bring jobs to the town. I want to see that bridge open. I was at the Traffic Commission the other day, and I thought the DPW director said it's probably going to be another year. And I don't think that that's right. It shouldn't take another year to get that open. This, it's not that huge of a project. It's not like a big project, like fixing steps outside. I know that was a huge project, took a long time. So I just would like to get that Mill Street Bridge going, so we can get businesses, get that bridge open. If it shored it up, if they can shore it up with a temporary fix right now, get it open. That's all I'm asking. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, Counsel Dow, actually, was, the other night at the DPW meeting, brought up the AC in this room. And I thought he was, he was, he sounded like he really knew what he was talking about. The, and, and you mentioned it, too. It's not going to take that much to put AC in this room. The DPW director threw out a number of $100,000. I don't think it's going to cost $100,000. Counsel Dow said he doesn't think it's going to cost $100,000 to add AC to this room. There's even ductless AC nowadays that you can install. I, I know Notre Dame Church has ductless air, air conditioning in there, and that's a bigger room than this, and it's very comfortable in there. So it's very uncomfortable in this room, when it's 90 degrees all, all day, and it's cooking. And we've got to do something about it. So, and that's all. Once again, good luck, Ron, on your future endeavors. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll follow up on that Mill Street issue. I thought it was going out to bid, but we'll follow up where that is. But.
Thank you. Counsel Dan, I mean Counsel Adams?
And I may, I may have heard it wrong, even at the Traffic Commission. When I sat down with the DPW director, it was a few more months for the temporary fix, but right now it's over at Mass DOT for their final approval for the temporary fix. I, I think she said, I thought it was two or three more months before they could temporarily open in the fall timeframe.
All right.
But you're right about the, the amount of money, too. I don't, I don't, I thought it switched somewhere in there. But I agree. Two, three more months, according to Heather.
Okay. We'll follow up on that. Counsel Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I just want to say thank you for your work there, Ron. We haven't always seen eye to eye, but I do like you, and I hope you do, hope you find what, whatever suits you. And one point I noticed that in the agenda, and I maybe I should mention this earlier, there was an item from GenGov that never made it here.
Was, was that the shredding?
That was, yeah, exactly. That was the shredding.
And I apologize for not following up with you. I asked Counselor, I asked somebody today. I said, hey, I didn't see it on the, I think Counselor Daniel and I viewed it. And I said, because I wasn't able to participate in your meeting because of my technology issues. I said, did this get passed over or something?
No, we approved it. And then it was the, it was the, the cooking, the cooking company one got passed over, for more information.
But the shredding company was part of, was passed?
No, yeah, we approved that one. Yeah.
Yeah. So make sure you send an email to your lawn so that it gets on for the next one.
Okay. I mean, I had mentioned it in my email, but I didn't, I had mentioned it as one of the other things that we had approved, because we didn't, I didn't make any changes to the, to the.
Yeah.
To the motion.
I didn't know if something else went on.
Actually, no, I thought I did. I think, but I think I did make changes to the motion the way we'd written it. So I don't know what happened. I just got lost in the shuffle somewhere. And I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right. Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ron, St. Angelo. Wish you the best in your future endeavors. Want to thank the DPW. I was out after the storm and, in the, in the day after. To piggyback on what Counselor Adams stated earlier, thank you very much to, to the DPW workers that were out around town, cleaning up, blowing, picking up branches. It was a lot of work, and it's much appreciated. Also, the police and fire for their updates. I know Chief Norman didn't send us updates frequently. It was much appreciated. Couple more things. Masks. It's really important that everyone out there wear your mask. I still see people, residents, individuals, I know, going into the supermarket. And if you see someone not wearing a mask, please don't approach them. I did see that outside a local supermarket. And it, it's just, walk away. All right. One other thing, again, Counselor Adams brought up something. I'm anxious to see the receipts come in. We are still, we still have a global pandemic. It's my belief that residents, taxpayers, families, they are struggling financially, and they do have hardships. And those receipts, I think, are going to be a telltale for all of us. And to see what this council can do, has done, we need to be cognizant of that every time we make a vote to spend money. I know I personally was during the tax season, I mean, during the, I got budget season. And something that we really need to, to remember every time that we, that we take a vote. As I stated, residents that are unemployed, and they're just, they are trying to make ends meet right now. There's been a recent increase in, in electric bills. And I'm anxious to see what comes back from national grid. And I'd like to see that pursued. We had a resident tonight talk to us, and not just brush, you know, just say, okay, we're going to call, but let's really get on that. And let's figure out why the increase in our electric bills of recent. I know I had one resident call me, and then after that, another family member from the same household across town called me. And I explained I have nothing to do with the tax, with the electric bills, but I would certainly mention it, why the sudden increase. So just, everyone be safe, wear your mask. Thank you.
Thank you. Interesting point. I, I know I got my electric bill, and I was like shocked at how much it went up. It was like a, and I know I've, I've seen a lot of postings today about everybody getting their electric bill. So that'd be an interesting follow-up. To Counselor Adams' point, before I go to Counsel Dan, we'll work through the town manager's office about maybe having a special town council meeting, since we'll do it remotely, about the financial picture, where we're at, and the implications of the governor's office announced that the unrestricted local aid and Chapter 70 would be held at last year's numbers. So I think we need to have a discussion about, okay, what is that implication? And have a presentation by the finance department, okay, given the fact that that is the numbers that they're giving us to, where does that put us with our overall budget strategy? And what are some of the things that we have to consider? I think as a council, we've done a pretty good job of holding the line right now on people who have left and not replacing those positions right now to maybe get a handle on the finances. But it's time for a discussion on that. So we'll schedule that up within the next week or so to have a, a discussion, at least a update as to where that is and what, how last year closed out. We should have some numbers at least of where last year closed out, and what concerns we might have this year. Counsel Steve?
Yeah, just a follow-up of that. When you do that, could you, could you ensure that the receiver is here? Because that's a key part of what we're facing in there. And from what I've seen in some of the other towns that I cover as a reporter, they've been, they've been having to add a lot of like staff and various other issues that are going to be fairly costly. And, you know, so I think we need to know what that's going to, how that's going to hit us as well. And I understand that they, that he is, he works for the state, and therefore he's much more strict about following the state guidelines as far as, you know, not releasing his report. I understand that. But, you know, we, we really need to know this, and sooner the better. Not only for our sakes, but for, so the public who are watching us, because if anybody's, if they're going to be watching anything at the moment, they'll be watching us.
Yeah.
Because the, because as we all know, unfortunately, the school committee is basically being sidelined. And so we need, so we are the access point for people to know what's going on with the schools, more or less.
Right.
So it'd be really helpful if you, if you could get here for that part.
I know there was a question about the dollar amounts for next year, and I know the receiver updated the EOC this morning as well as, and I know that'll probably be part of this, because if they go back to school, they'll have to put additional monitors in and talk about space. So there's a whole host of things that he's trying to work through. I do know, based on what the MMA put out the other day, that the, there was CARES Act, Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Money to the town of Southbridge in the amount of $835,212. And then Corona's Relief Fund allocated to the schools of another $480,600. So I think that's the conversation we have to have with, with the finance department as well. Okay, so they, I think they got 1.4, 1.5 million dollars in additional monies relative to COVID. But how does that impact our overall budget as well? So it's a conversation that we should have back at the table. So thank you for bringing that all up, Counselors. Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Mr. St. Angelo, thank you. Going back to when I was a citizen member of the EHS Committee, you were always above board. You, you took me under your wing and helped out a stranger, learn the ropes a little bit. And I appreciated that. I definitely appreciated that. And I still do, you know, three years later. It was very kind of you. I asked a lot of questions at the beginning. And you always had the answers. You were, you were willing to sit down with me, take the time to, to counsel me a little bit. And I definitely appreciated that. And I think it helped to make me, I like to think I'm a good counselor, and I think you had a part in that. So I just want to say thank you very much, and that I wish you bon voyage in your travels. I hope that you do well. I want to make a note to a certain group of constituents of mine over on Teresa Ave, that I did speak with the Chief of Police today, and he will look into that situation on Teresa Ave for you. So that's, that is being taken care of. It's going to take a little while over. It's going to take a little while overall, but it's gonna, it's gonna be looked at. Mr. St. Angelo, if you could, can you ask the, the DPW about the status of the pump station and rental generator on South Street? I've had some concerns about that as well, and as I've driven by heading up that way to see my brother in the blackout, I saw it sitting there, and I'm, and I know that, I think we had done some work on it in the past here in front of the council, and it's still sitting there, and it didn't seem to be running, it just seemed to be sitting there. So if you could, thank you. There's a lot of controversy on social media about the sidewalks and, and the weeds and all that kind of thing, and I believe that the town does have a responsibility to maintain its sidewalks. But I'm also wondering, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I know in the winter you have to shovel. In the summer, do you still have, do landowners and abutters still have a responsibility to somewhat maintain the cleanliness of their sidewalks?
I, I don't know that.
The general answer to that is yes. The residences are supposed to maintain the sidewalks in front of their property and do what we would call routine maintenance kinds of items. They're not responsible for necessarily getting it repaving or any of the general, you know, cleaning and making sure that there's access.
Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Making sure there's general access and cleaning of the sidewalk is part of the responsibility of a homeowner, yes. I don't think, I think you're correct in that snow is a very obvious thing that they take care of in order to clear their sidewalks. I'm not so sure that they are, citizens are generally concerned with grass or things that may get in the cracks of sidewalks. So I don't think generally most citizens do that. Now, there are obviously citizens who take care of their property, make their yards look nice, and they do it, but, but I, I, I think the focus is not there. Maybe some education on that side to talk to citizens about what they should do throughout the whole year instead of just discussing winter activities, but I think that you may need a little bit of an education campaign for that.
Thank you. Then I would suggest to the people in town that a well-placed phone call, either to a counselor or to the DPW, and suggesting where work needs to be done, then perhaps we can get the ball rolling, notify the abutters that some work needs to be done. Is that while we expect the DPW to do a lot of it, this is a good-sized town with a lot of sidewalks, it's a walking town, they can't do it all and keep up with it. They can't be every place at the same time every day. So well-placed phone calls, I think, rather than complaining on social media, would help us out a lot. So to the townsfolk, please consider us and give us the opportunity to make it right by you. We've talked a little bit tonight about the financial straits that people are in, in town, and I think that's something that's very valid and something that we need to be concerned about. I take it into account. You know, I'm, I'm semi-retired, I'm furloughed right now, and, you know, things are tight. I'm not saying that I'm better or worse than anyone, but I'm concerned. However, I think that we need to be careful when we're doing our dealings here at the council with, are we kicking the can down the road? And I know we've talked about that in the past. I think we need to understand the difference between being frugal and being fiscally irresponsible. And I'm not saying that any one item tonight was either frugal or fiscally irresponsible. What I'm saying is, is that as we look at these items as a whole, that we need to be alert to the fact that in some instances, yes, we can afford to be frugal, but in some instances, we're finding now that we're getting motions in front of us, agenda items in front of us for work that is going toward issues that are years in the making and are just not getting any cheaper. And at some point, you have to bite the bullet and, and be fiscally responsible in the overall picture to the people in town. Sometimes you have to fix the roof because the leaking in the corner is getting down into the wall, and that's creating more problems. Or perhaps you've let the roof go for a few years, and it finally gets to the point that you have to do the whole thing rather than just replace a few shingles. So please, be frugal, absolutely. Be aware of what our concerns are for the, for the people in this town. We don't have a gazillion millionaires living in town. Absolutely be frugal, but please be fiscally responsible as well. Thank you. That's all I have.